It is a serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zooms, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know.
Alderman O'Brien?
President.
Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Clay?
Here.
Alderman Moran? Alderman Lopez?
Here.
Alderman Juddy?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Como? Alderman Dowd?
President.
Alderman Govea? Alderman Cathy?
President.
Alderman Tebow? Alderwoman Timmins? Alderman Wiltshire?
I am here.
You have 10 physically in attendance, zero participating via Zoom.
Thank you very much.
New business resolutions?
There are none.
There is. She'll take it.
First reading of R. 22039 authorizing Pennechuck Corporation and Pennechuck Waterworks Incorporated to borrow funds from the state of New Hampshire revolving loan fund.
Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Pennechuck Water Special Committee. Sorry, I didn't ask for additional sponsors first. Alderman Clay, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to Pennechuck Water Special Committee. Discussion. Tonight we're having a discussion on the spending cap. CFO Griffin, if you'd like to join us. Also joining us this evening are Attorney Bolton and Mayor Donches and Director Cummings. Who wants to take this for a start? Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Tonight we're here to have a discussion on the spending cap. I've spoken a little bit about some of the ingredients in the spending cap, but working with Ms. Graham today, I thought it very proper to provide you with a copy of the resolution. It includes a page of the charter, which we followed, as well as the detailed calculation of the spending cap. So I can go over the mechanics if you'd like, explain what's included.
Please.
And then we can have a discussion of why we're here. Thank you. So if we look on page four, this is actually the presentation and model that I used from 2010 when I arrived to when the spending cap was deemed unenforceable by the different courts in the state of New Hampshire. Essentially, what we're trying to do is pick a base year. So as you recall, when the spending cap was, or the tax cap, or whatever it was called, was reinstated, we needed a base year. Base year we chose was fiscal '22, and several of you remember that, base year. We took the general fund appropriations, the enterprise funds, the special revenue funds, including grant funds. Grant funds act a little bit different than special revenue funds, but they are for a specific purpose with specific funding, and they don't lapse at the end of a given fiscal year. They do not lapse to surplus. Now, in addition to fiscal '22, you also want to consider things that happened during fiscal '22, which are called supplemental appropriations. Supplemental appropriations can supplement the general fund, which we had a few totaling 2.33 million; enterprise funds, which totaled 1.85 million; capital project funds. Capital project funds are in here because the Board of Aldermen is approving the borrowing, allowing the mayor and I, the city treasurer, to borrow funds to construct several of our projects. The total amount is listed as 76,399,000. I'm going to pass out, if you let me, an exhibit that details each one of those resolutions and the amount of the resolutions. Some of the resolutions you're going to be very familiar with. 21 million for the TIF for the Riverwalk project, 37.5 million for the bonding, bond paving program, but there's others as well, and they add up, and they're for good purposes. So essentially, you get the total supplemental appropriations, you add the two together, and you get that a little over half a billion. And then you move on to fiscal '23, which is the mayor's proposed budget. Using the same ingredients you've been reviewing over the last several weeks, the general fund appropriation proposal, enterprise funds, special revenue funds, including the grants. Because of the amount of opera funds we received, fortunately, by the U.S. Treasury and the, what's called the ESER funds on the school side, we've had a reduction in the number of grants, but we still have the mainstays, which I reviewed with the committee a few weeks ago, reviewing the grants that we have. And the interesting part of the grants is the Board of Aldermen not only accepts the grants, but they appropriate the grants. So it's a very important note as we proceed with this discussion. So if we move forward with the fiscal '23, the total appropriations at the front, first two pages of this particular resolution is the 406,663,584. The reason why there's nothing in the supplementals is you haven't had the opportunity to supplement the budget yet. As we do, part of the calculation would be to add that supplemental appropriation and inform the board how much under the cap we remain. Very consistent with the prior calculations of spending caps that I'm familiar with. We get into the calculation. We have the total fiscal '22 appropriations, which is the original appropriation of the budget and the supplemental appropriations. We take that number, and the cost of living or the adjustment that we're allowed to make is referred to as the state and local government implicit price deflator. It was a replacement of, what you may recall, the CPIU Northeast. The residents of the city voted for that, thinking that that might be a better description of how your budget should increase relative to state and local government spending. So that number is 2.8. So if you take the 2.8, multiply it by the total appropriations on line 19, you get about 14.1 million. Add that to the appropriations, and we are, add that to the base, which is 520 million. Or to get 520 million, subtract the current budget on line five under the fiscal '23 column. You end up with about 113 million under the cap for this calculation. So this approach is what I refer to as gross basis budgeting from the municipal guidance. I think the issue is that the municipal guidance for accounting and finance sometimes differs from a possible uniqueness to a spending cap calculation. Attorney Bolton and I have had discussions on that, and he's prepared to explain that difference, but what I wanted to do was go through the mechanics. And if I may, I will pass out that exhibit that will further detail the calculation of the supplemental appropriations that have been passed through the fiscal '22 period. So if I may, the first thing I want to do is apologize for how small this font is, but I really didn't have time to put it on. It really looks good on an 11 by 17. If you want one of those, I can, or I can send this to you. But essentially, this is the entire calculation. It's got the description, left-hand side. It's got the resolution numbers, got the broken out by general funds, special revenue funds, grant funds. TIF district, people are very interested in that being budgeted and appropriated. Capital project funds, that's the lion's share of that supplemental appropriation. You're probably familiar with most of those resolutions. And then the enterprise funds, from time to time, are supplemented during the year, but the totals are on lines 23, and the creation of the base budget's on line 26. And you can see that on the right-hand side, if we take the total base budget times that percentage, we get the new cap value. So that, Madam President, is a brief overview of how I calculated the spending cap analysis, why I thought it was important that it get put next to the resolution, because everything ties together, and also included in the resolution with the guidance of the mayor and Corporation Council. I put in there the spending cap pages, or page, so you don't have to look at the big book and figure out what page it's on, et cetera. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, just out of curiosity, based on what's happening with the economy right now, where is the SNL IPD going, up or down?
The SNL IPD is going up.
Up.
And to that point, if I may, the S, and that particular metric is a three-year average. So if you can imagine, it was a lot lower three years ago than it was last year. So it is, my expectation would be that it would increase next year.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. In preparation for tonight, I, and I would appreciate someone explaining to me, I understand the tax cap was passed in 1993, and it went away for a little while, and now it's back. I love an understanding of that timeline. But before I do that, I was looking at some budgets from prior years, specifically fiscal year '17, '18, and '19, where the layout for the spending cap, when the spending cap was in effect for those three fiscal years, it wasn't laid out the way that the fiscal year '23 is laid out. And by that, I mean, in the upper section, you had your general fund, and then it was broken out by enterprise funds, solid waste, wastewater, and then city special revenue funds, school special revenue funds, and then below it, you backed out the enterprise fund for both solid waste and wastewater, and then you backed out city special revenue funds and school special revenue funds. I don't see that in fiscal year '23, and I'm curious why we didn't do that. Because that took the total appropriations from fiscal year 2017 from 289 million less, 29 million, with a total appropriation of 260,526,617. And that's where they applied the cap on top of that. So I'm just curious why we didn't do that for fiscal year '23.
So, Madam President, and other members, I think Corporation Counsel, who was with us in his position in '17 and so on, he's our expert on the cap. I can say that when I came in in 2010, I inherited a very complicated, in my opinion, not simple, cap structure, which you just referenced, where things were taken out of the calculation through ordinance.
But could you understand why I would be confused, where in three consecutive years, we took it out, and then the cap went away, and now the cap is back, and now we're not taking them out?
The only thing I can say to that, if I may, is that, and I was actually relieved that the cap didn't have, I was under the impression, and like I said, Corporation Counsel can further the details, but I was under the impression that we're going to finally be able to go to gross budgeting and include everything with no, nothing subtracted. That's my professional opinion, but there's a better answer with regard to the process from creation to ordinance changes that changed the calculation many, many, many years before I was here. And then finally, the decision that the current spending cap that we had at the time was unenforceable. So we went back to just budgeting without a page that talked about the spending cap. And this is the reintroduction with what's called gross budgeting. We're putting in all the appropriations so people have an understanding of what you folks are appropriating and not carving out things.
So we just changed it. We just changed the way that we're going to factor it in. We didn't, we went from, we went from this system to gross budgeting, which you mentioned, and that's how we're factoring it?
Yeah, again, this is.
I'm trying to connect the dots.
Yeah, I understand. Let me see if I can give it a shot, but the prior spending cap, the one that I came in with, had items that were subtracted by ordinance from the calculation. I don't see anything to subtract going forward, because I'm relying on a spending cap in place with all appropriations appropriate, and there's no need to subtract anything. I don't know if that's a better answer for you, Alderman Sullivan, but there's no need of subtracting anything, because everything's included.
I'm just not understanding it. I don't, you're saying by ordinance, the ordinance is what made us subtract these specific, these specific funds in those three years that I mentioned? And now, and now those ordinances?
If I may, if I may, Madam President and members, we didn't even include the bonds back then. So there's no need to subtract. Some of the confusing part of the former spending cap was what to do with the wastewater treatment plant and the costs associated with it. The special revenues are added, subtracted, because they're not, they don't have an impact on the calculation at the end of the day. This particular spending cap has all the appropriations in it from last year and this year, and then you apply the metric, which is the state and local government implicit price deflator multiplier, and then you get a new number.
No, I understand how we get it.
Yep.
I think that, my bigger question is, what are we building that number off of? That multiplier? I mean, I understand what the multiplier is, but if we're, if we're taking total appropriations and in prior years, we subtracted certain monies to bring down those total appropriations, and then we built the spending cap off of that net number, and now we're not taking anything out of those total appropriations, and then we're applying a 2.8% increase off of that, it really, it just misses the mark for me. And then the other, the other piece, the other question I have is the grant funds. So you're saying grant funds, if we get, if we get $100,000 from the state or the federal government, that's a grant, we're counting that as an appropriation because it goes to a specific cause? I mean, wouldn't that, are you counting that as $100,000, or are you counting that as $200,000?
Madam President, I would count that as $100,000.
Because we're getting it.
Right. But, but some of these questions are more the legal interpretation of the spending cap. You don't, you really don't, this isn't something that the comptroller and I would be learning at the Department of Revenue Administration. This is the interpretation of a cap. It's not a tax cap, it's a spending cap, and what I liked about it is it didn't subtract anything. As a purist accounting person, where every appropriation that you folks, that you folks rule on is in the cap.
Attorney Bolton would like to weigh in.
I think I can help with some of these questions. Taking the grant question first, a grant is revenue, but when we spend it, it's an expenditure. There are many things like that throughout the budget. You've got a whole section on revenue and another section, larger section, on expenditures. So the motor vehicle funds that are collected when people register their cars downstairs, that's revenue to the city, but then that gets spent. That's part of the money that funds those appropriations on the expenditure, half of the budget. Similar with grants. Revenue comes in, part of the arrangement with the state, but more likely the federal government, is we get that money because we promised to do certain things with it. We promised to spend it on the program that we spend it in. When this board approves the acceptance of that, they're approving that agreement and authorizing the expenditure of money for the purpose therein contained. So that's an expense. That's part of what the city charter refers to as total expenditures, and that's what builds the base. There's another reason why grants should not be treated specially or subtracted or something, and that's because the state statute would allow that in a city charter. In fact, RSA 49-C33, Roman numeral one, says, "A tax cap provision in the city charter may provide for specific exclusions for dedicated enterprise or self-supporting funds or accounts, capital reserve funds, grants, or revenue from sources other than local taxes, or interest and principal payments on municipal bonded debt, or capital expenditures, which shall be by a supermajority vote, as determined in the charter." So the charter could say that you're going to subtract grants. Our charter does not say that, meaning grants have to be included. Now, there is an ordinance that was passed back in '94, had some amendments over time that attempted to say what things should be subtracted. I have long been of the opinion that those ordinances were contrary to the city charter. You cannot change a city charter by ordinance. Clear you can't? The charter talks about total expenditures. It doesn't say anything about subtracting out grants or special revenue or other things. It could, but it doesn't. Since it doesn't, those things have to be included.
My only question is, why did we do it for three years in a row, and now we're not doing it?
I think it was illegal to do it for those three years. Alderman, former Alderman Tebow, and then Alderman Moriarty took the city to court over that. In that case, the court found it did not have to reach the question of whether the budget in that year, I believe that year was '18, those ordinances should have been followed as they were then in effect. Court didn't reach that question because it found that the entire spending cap itself did not comply with state law. State law, last year, in 2021, was amended to essentially say, regardless of what the Supreme Court said, that spending cap is okay, go with it. So we're going with the spending cap as it's contained in the budget. What was done in prior years, I think, was illegal.
Now, I see the confusion, all right? I get why you're, why it's confusing, and I can state, and you haven't been given a timeline. So this is my understanding, subject to correction by either of our other two experts, Attorney Bolton or Mr. Griffin. But if you look at the spending cap, it is very, you know, it's very basic. It says, as is section 56(c) of the charter, "In establishing a combined annual municipal budget for the next fiscal year, the mayor and Board of Aldermen shall consider total expenditures." And that's the only guidance it gives, total expenditures, that's it. And then goes on to say that the percentage increase, et cetera. Total expenditures. That's the only language in the charter that really says what's in and what's out. Now, that is a very, very broad term. Includes like every check, every appropriation, every bond issue, everything. So back in the '90s, when this passed, people saw the difficulty of that broad concept, and that it would, there'd be huge volatility because of capital expenditures and bond issues. So the Board of Aldermen at that time passed interpretive language. Here's what it means. This is in, and this is out. And there was, there was, there were ordinances that defined what was in and what was out. And, for example, the enterprise funds were out, or, but one of those ordinances said that only half of the wastewater fund was in and half was out. And the Board of Aldermen in the city continued to follow those interpreted ordinances, and I always considered them myself to be valid. Steve did, you know, Attorney Bolton did not, but he's the expert, but I thought it was reasonable that the city was interpreting what the spend, what that broad term meant. Well, then, several years back, the wastewater fund was half in and half out. The Board of Aldermen passed an amendment saying, well, look, it's, you know, the wastewater fund is not tax dollars. It's a separate, it's not property taxes. So it makes no sense to have it half in and half out, so we'll, we'll put it all out. And so they amended the ordinance to say the wastewater fund is no longer part of it. That was challenged in court, and the Superior Court decided, without the city's request, the city never requested to invest. the city never requested to invalidate the cap, but the court on its own volition decided the spending cap is invalid because it doesn't contain an override provision. Okay, then the legislature got into the act. And over the unanimous objection of the House delegation at least, both parties and, everyone was against it. Unanimous opposition, the legislature adopted an act which attempted to put the spending cap back into effect. But in, in doing so, and here made it in doing so, suggested that only the language of the charter is meaningful. Ordinances cannot amend or interpret or change or anything else. That all these ordinances that had been passed in previous years, which resulted in those deductions, which you were pointing out. Only the charter language means anything. So the ordinances no longer apply. And, and therefore, all, we do not have those interpretive ordinances anymore. We don't have the thing that says this is in and this is out. All we have is this simple language in the charter that says total expenditures should be included. And what Attorney Bolden was saying right at the end is, yes, you could exclude enterprise funds or grants, things like that, but you know, the legislature in its wisdom made it clear that those things, those kind of exclusions would have to be in the charter itself. They can't be in an ordinance. And they're not in the charter. So the difference is that the legislature changed the landscape and said that these, you know, in, in essence, these interpretive ordinances that had been passed and were applied, resulting in those deductions are no longer applicable. All we've got is the spending, all we've got is the language total expenditures. And so Attorney, Mr. Griffin, the CFO, is, is telling you what total expenditures are. He's applying the strict language of the charter.
I have a question, I think.
Now, if, if that is inaccurate, which it could be. If that requires correction, please, please do, please make the correction.
Around grant funds and building our appropriations off of grant funds. And I'll just ask this in a common sense way. Do you think counting grant funds, money that we got in 2022, and then spent, I understand that, and included those as total appropriations to build our spending cap off of, do you think that's a good decision? Because to bring it back to my home budget, if I got a loan or a grant for $25,000 and I went out and bought something and then I had to whatever I did, and then that relied on normal income, those payments would then be in my home budget. And if I didn't get that grant again in the next year, then I'd be hamstrung because I wouldn't be able to afford it. Does that make sense?
No. And let me tell you why. When we don't think we're going to get the same amount of grants, we reduce the amount we're assuming for grants in the next year's budget. So if you look at what Mr. Griffin has given you, you see that the amount of grants last year in '22 was 70... What was it here? Now, it was well, he says it's special revenue funds including grants. Last year was approximately 96 million. This year it's down to approximately 60 million. So you can see it, when your anticipation of what you're going to get in grants changes, you make that assumption in your budget. So in your home budget, if you got a $25,000 grant or windfall from something else, and you didn't think you were going to get it the following year, exactly, you don't plan on spending it the following year, just as this budget and this calculation does.
Okay. I appreciate you pointing that out.
And you're right, it, it doesn't make sense. And that's why these ordinances had been passed. And again, I always thought, you know, they helped. I always equated it with, you know, the Congress passes laws that help to interpret like the 14th Amendment or whatever. But the legislature invalidated ordinances that helped make this more workable, saying that only the language of the charter applies. So we, we come up with kind of a, you know, a, a result that, you know, has the problems you've just identified.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. This brings up my, something I want to talk about. Which is I did a calculation. Just a quick calculation here. And I took the 59 million that we're budgeting this year for the FY '23 budget for grants. And I multiplied that by a factor of 3%. So that's comes out to be approximately $1.787 million. Are what you're telling me here is that in fiscal '24, if the spending cap calculation is 3%, we cannot accept any grants above 59,581 plus the $1.787 million because we have to stay under the spending cap?
No. You have to stay under the spending cap in the gross budget, but it doesn't apply line for line.
Assuming that the other lines go up by the same 3%, would that be true? Or we can, in other words, here's, here's a better way to put it. If we come into a $20 million grant or a $16 million grant like we did this year with the ARPA funds, right? We can't take that money. Is that correct? Because, or we can take a portion of it only?
It'd be theoretically possible to get into that situation, but there are things that can be excluded by vote of 10 Aldermen. And that'd be capital projects and I gotta get the charter out so I remember exactly what it is. It's, you can exclude the principal and interest payments on municipal bonds, or you can exclude expenditures for capital improvements. Typically, we have significant amount of expenditures for capital improvement. So if you exclude that, that gives you some wiggle room. But, in fact, you do not have an override provision that you can go to for essentially an unlimited ceiling. There, there will be a ceiling of, at some level, even if you take advantage of excluding everything that you can exclude.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yep. So would a grant theoretically, would a grant that went to fund, let's say, firefighters' gear, for example, would that be a capital improvement that could be excluded from the spending cap?
I would say probably not. Unless you were telling me that these, the gear that you're talking about has a lifespan of 10 or 15 years.
So what I'm coming to the understanding here is that we are next, this fiscal year '23, we have 113 million, we're 113 million under the spending cap. Now, but it seems to me that if we don't receive a significant sum of, of grants in, in the next year or before July 2023, that we're going, that we could be in trouble. The, the other thing that I have, the other question that I have is along the same lines, and that's for the enterprise funds. If we see an uptick in revenue, we can only spend, we can take the revenue in, but we can only spend a portion of it out. Correct?
That, you could run into that issue. I mean, you've got a significant gap here between the limit on total expenditure and the amount of this proposed budget. I guess I didn't understand you before saying that if we don't by June 30th, get a large number of grants, we're in trouble because I, I don't see that.
Well, here's my question. And what, let's move to, rather than talk about grants, let's talk about the revenue fund. So as we all know, the sewer system has continually plagued us with different, especially the overflow, has plagued us with for years on, on having to raise the rates, for example, so that we can pay for projects. Are we constrained with how much we can raise the rates? Because we're constrained with how much we can spend the following year on any particular project because of the spending cap? So, in other words, in years past-
Capital expenditures can be excluded.
Okay, so they would have to be excluded and that would take a vote of 10, 10 Aldermen?
Right. But you're never constrained on raising the rates. I mean, your constraint is what you think is prudent and what you think your constituents would would be
I guess my point is-
agreeable to. So the revenue side, there's no cap on the revenue side. The cap is on the expenditure side.
I guess my, my point is though, is that if we're constrained on the spending side of it, you, you would only raise rates if you thought that you were going to do some big project or something you were anticipating in, in the future. But if you don't have 10 Aldermen come to agree to, to do that, to exclude that out of, of the spending cap calculation, we probably wouldn't want to go and raise rates anyway. I don't know. These are the conversations, I guess, that come back with having the spending cap the way that the state has decided that we must apply it. Because I agree with, with the mayor and I agree with what Alderman Sullivan was saying, which is that it doesn't make sense to have these calculations in there. And I think the ordinances that we had in place before were a, you know, us recognizing or the Board of Aldermen recognizing that the charter language is too strict and too harsh. I've always felt that way as an Alderman. I, I always thought that it was ridiculous that and there have been cases, there have been instances, when I've been on this Board of Aldermen, when we have received $500,000, a million dollars, and it can't be spent because we're up against the, the spending cap, especially in those low inflation years. Probably not going to be an issue in the next coming years, but it happens. I've seen it happen. And so I just, I think, I think it's something that we need to think about, how we want our charter to read in the future. I don't necessarily mind the spending cap that you know, or spend, some kind of spending. I don't really like the spending cap, to be honest with you. But if there is a spending cap, it's, it really, we need to think about not including grants and enterprise funds. So.
If you're asking me if I think it makes perfect sense, I've never said I-
No, 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 I wasn't, no, 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 I-
If you're asking me if I think it could be better written, yeah, I do.
And, and I, and I would agree with you. Thank you.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this question will be for Attorney Bolden, among many questions. In the language of the SB 52, it states that such a tax cap shall provide for an override threshold. Am I to understand that that piece of legislation is dictating to us to create an override? When it says shall, like it's telling us, you have to put this into the language of your tax cap laws? Or is it just saying it can include it?
No. The statute requires that there be an override.
So are we-
Let me finish. That's what the Supreme Court of New Hampshire held in 2019. The spending cap in Nashville's charter was invalid because it did not have such an override provision. Last year, in 2021, the legislature passed a law that said essentially, not in these precise words, but essentially said that any tax or spending cap passed prior to 2010?
2011.
2011 was valid regardless of any other problem.
Okay.
So, the fact that it doesn't have the override, which would otherwise be required, the legislature basically said it's valid anyway.
So, does that mean that we are in violation of this statute that was passed in SB 52 because we did not create an override provision in our charter through an ordinance? Is that something that we need to be doing?
It has to be in the chart.
Has already exist in the charter.
Has to be in the chart.
But we could add one.
If you meant the chart.
But we don't, we're not being forced, we're not being told we have to now. Go do that.
Well, if, as the Supreme Court decided in 2019, without it, the, that provision in the charter was invalid. The legislature basically said, no. The charter is valid even without it. So, no, we don't have to do anything. Basically, we've got the charter language as it is, basically to do the best we can to make sense out of it. And it's already been pointed out in some places, it may not make perfect sense.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you. For my own edification, and maybe for others, are there any accounting principles, laws, whether they're federal or state or even local, that dictate how our accounting system works? Because to Alderman Sullivan's point, there's a difference between what they did then and what we're doing now. And so for me, I immediately go to, what is the, what is the underlying principle and process for how municipal budgets are completed, whether it's in Nashville or anywhere around the country? What guardrails do we have that we say we have to include capital projects or we don't have to include? Or we have to include enterprise funds or we don't? Is there some metric or some guideline that we can point to? Or can we sort of pick and choose how we would like to?
I think the Municipal Budget Act has something to be said on what the budget is.
Right. Madam President and other members of the board, there's certainly very prescriptive, detailed requirements on the proper municipal accounting. This is an off-book calculation that somebody who's interested in making. That's why when it passed, you know, me being kind of a practical person, I said, who's in charge? Who is actually going to tell us how this should be constructed? And fortunately, I had Attorney Bolden. I mean, a donkey, he said, just, you know, read this very literally and present. It's not even in the budget book because all the accounting is proper in here. It's literally a calculation that folks decided through charter amendments and so forth proper. So what I want to explain to everybody here, don't worry about the accounting. We've got like 15 years of unmodified opinions. We've got AAA bond ratings. We've got an excellent presentation of our information. If this was any way, this, this is like one paragraph.
Right.
In the official statement of the city. And maybe even the GFO submittal to get the award for excellence on, on- And maybe even the GFO submittal to get the award for excellence on on financial reporting. So you're not going to find it, you're not going to be able to call anybody up at the DRA and talk to them about it because there's a lot of tax caps and spending caps.
Okay.
Now, I come from Massachusetts where, good, bad, or indifferent, we had Proposition Two and a Half back in nineteen eighty two. Extremely prescriptive, but a lot of outs. A lot of extremely prescriptive, but a lot of outs. So here is, we're just trying to take the best information we can, craft a budget. But if I thought for one minute anything in here was going to affect the accounting of the city, I'd have a problem with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Griffin. I was just curious because as Alderman, we don't, I mean, I I know a little bit about accounting, but not enough to know the rules and regs of how these budgets are put together. So I appreciate that. To clarify, an earlier statement, I believe it was Mayor Donches, the ordinances that we used to have that were related to the spending cap, those ordinances no longer exist and or apply to our current situation. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
As I understand it, they no longer apply because the legislature said you have to go by the charter language only. And you cannot alter it, interpret it, or modify it by an ordinance.
We can't alter the spending cap through ordinance.
Correct.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you. Two questions kind of together. One, why, I'm guessing why we would include grants only because they don't? I don't see them as expenditure, I see them as revenue. And even when we spend them out, it's sort of like we're the conduit for how the federal government or the state government is spending money, and so it's not really us. And then two, wastewater is funded by users' fees, so that's, how does that play in? Because that's not necessarily, I guess, related to expenditures because we're getting revenue in to cover the cost of what we're spending. So how do those two things, you know, factor into the budget and how they apply to the cap? When I feel like the cap is supposed to constrain us from spending taxpayer money? And grant money and wastewater money is not that, at least to my understanding, not could be incorrect.
Well, I think that was the goal. But that's not what it says. Talks about total expenditures. Furthermore, the state statute about spending caps says you can exclude certain things by a super majority vote of the Alderman if your charter allows it. Our charter only allows it in those two places where I mentioned, the interest and principal of bonded debt and capital expenditures. So, yeah, would would it make sense to treat things that have no impact on taxes differently? It may well make sense. Our charter does not make that distinction.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Griffin, the capital project funds, you mentioned one was the Riverwalk Bonding Project and then the Paving Bonding Project, and I'm sure there are a bunch of other projects listed in there. To my recollection or understanding, those bonds have not been sold, at least for all of the paving project or the Riverwalk project. And in the case of the paving project, to my understanding, even though we have the approval for the bonds, you're not going to sell them all right away because it's a five-year project. So how do those numbers get to be calculated into a twenty twenty two budget? When they actually haven't been, you haven't gone out and sold the bonds and won't do so till maybe the twenty twenty three year or even beyond? So how does that get to apply to the twenty twenty two? Because that sort of, you know, changes the numbers.
Madam President, members of the board, great question. I struggled with it. But you are appropriating the spending of thirty seven point five million at that evening or day that you approved it. You're approving the twenty one million. The spending cap total expenditures, the spending cap language didn't talk about vintageing, when are you going to spend it? Can you imagine the calculation in the debate of selling bonds versus using general fund and then sell it? You know, it just, it it became overly complicated. So um, the comptroller and I with the team basically said, let's let's put it all in. It's an authority to spend. The plan, I mean, Corporation Council, the plan could be expedited, potentially notifying you folks if we had, if we wanted to be aggressive with the paving or the Riverwalk, we wanted to turn a three-year project into a two-year, you know. So I relied on the fact that you folks appropriated the authority to borrow and spend money on the project.
I mean, there's an even more fundamental problem because you could say that about a lot of things. When departments are preparing the budget in February for each individual department, there's another five months of payroll that hasn't been expended yet. You you've got to go by something. If you can't go by what's been authorized to be expended, then you'd have to wait until July first to add up all the checks that were actually written. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't know what the spending cap number is until after we're required to have a budget by August first. We'd certainly like to have it by July first is when the fiscal year starts. But if if you go by when you actually expend the money, it it is just practically, as a practical matter, impossible to know those numbers in time to prepare a budget.
I understand that, that makes sense. As a process and procedure guy, I'm always wanting to protect against, you know, future instances. And so my mind goes to, well, what if someone wanted to artificially inflate the numbers and ask for appropriation that they may or may not need? So we have more room in the spending cap. I'm not saying anyone's doing that, but I'm just sort of like thought exercise. Should we not come up with some way to protect against that way? That in the future?
You, you vote against that appropriation. That's why you are here.
I'm thinking more like, um, if, I don't know, I don't even know what I'm thinking. That's sort of like off the top of my head. But if we say we need twenty one million dollars for Riverwalk, then we, you know, we go out and we sell bonds, but we only sell seventeen and a half because we know we don't, because we figured out that's what we need. Not twenty one million. Well, that affects the budget and then obviously the the cap because it's four million extra dollars. And so I didn't know. I don't know, I'm just trying to think through the accounting principle wise, how that works, why it works that way, if it should or shouldn't.
The good news, the good news is eventually it gets paid back. Because if you don't spend it, it's there. It doesn't just go to the general fund. It has to be the transfer to another capital project, which the Alderman find necessary to do. Or it gets paid back to retire the the payments on those bonds, retire that debt or a portion of it. So it it it's it's not a waste and assuming there's no theft or misappropriation involved, it it effectively lowers, to the extent it's not needed and never spent, it lowers taxes in the future.
Hold on.
No, I'm good.
Oh, you're good. I have Alderman Klee next.
Thank you, Madam President. This conversation to somewhat does frustrate me a little as a as a state rep. I worked very hard to get the language of the state to um become and 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 change SB fifty two to allow for Nashua to override. The only municipality in the entire state that does not have that. And sadly, many residents from Nashua came and and spoke and as well as a certain senator and so on. So it did not, it did not happen. The clear question here, I shouldn't say that, I should make a statement, is that spending cap is not the same thing as a tax cap. Just because we have a spending cap does not mean that the taxes will or won't go up. And people conflate the two things of, you know, and I know logic says if I don't spend a lot of money, then I don't need a lot of money and so on. But when the, I I disagree that grants should be excluded. Grants are still expenditures. It may be free money, and in the end, we may look at it and say it was a wash, money coming in and money going out. But how is that different from any other revenue source that we have? If we can get enough money in a particular revenue source, why shouldn't we be able to spend all that money? And that's not the way how things work. The way it works is that per the spending cap is you have a limit as to how much you can do on the spending cap. In this particular year, it's two point eight percent. And it's and it's a rolling three-year average. So if you have a good year or a bad year or whatever, it's going to affect that. We're two bad years yet. It's it's going to affect that. It's very frustrating trying to to work on a budget in that particular way, especially in a year where there has been a lot of grants that have been given. I can tell you that, you know, the city has a a one million dollar grant for for Lock Street. And I sweat it all the time. Are we going to suddenly hit the spending cap and now we can't use that money? This has been promised since twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and that would be a horrible thing to to do to these these people. But just putting that, putting that aside, when our police and everybody else works very hard to get grant money and the citizens say, okay, yeah, that's a good thing because it's not costing me anything out of the pocket, it means that something else can't be purchased, something else can't get done because we got this free money. We tried very hard in the legislation to put just that statement in, that the override would be allowed in the one municipality. It got voted down because it was not understood. And I can see even looking in the horseshoe that it is a very confusing wording and and so on. But it is what it is. The only way I know to change the charter is to have a vote on it. And the truth is, if you go to the people and say, let's change the spending cap or let's remove the spending cap or let's change it to a tax gap, there's going to be an equal amount of people that are going to go out there and say, no, 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 don't do that because this is nefarious and and so on. So do we leave it? Do we try to change it? How do we educate people? The bottom line is it's there. I think that what Mr. Griffin has done is keeping it as simple as possible. As frustrating as it is, I appreciate the work that you're you're doing. The city does not have an override. No matter what anybody tells us, we do not have an override. If you look at fifty six dash D, the exception to the budget limitation is very, very limited. And that's what we're stuck with and that's what we're living with. And basically, pardon my language, but they gave the proverbial finger to our Supreme Court Justice when they put SB fifty two through. And it was meant to hit Nashua and only Nashua because it did not affect anybody. And anybody who says or thinks differently is wrong.
Well stated.
I have Alderman Clemmons next.
Thank you. I um I had a lot of thoughts, but I I guess what I I guess what I'll, my my question comes to the end of what Alderman Klee had just said, and that is, has anyone challenged or is there going to be a challenge that you know of? Or to the constitutionality of that law? Because if what you're telling me is that the state Supreme Court said one thing and the legislature said another, that usually leads to the court deciding who wins. So I don't know if you think that.
It's not quite that simple, Alderman Clemmons. The court interpreted what the legislature had said. The legislature then amended the statute so it said something slightly different. And with with the clear intent to change the interpretation that the Supreme Court gave. So one, I know of no effort to challenge that. And two, I don't think any challenge would be successful. The legislature had the perfect right to change its statute.
Alderman Clemmons?
So just to clarify that, there's nothing constitutionally uh, in the New Hampshire state constitution that would that they based their decision on, it was purely statutory?
Yes.
Okay. I I guess I'll just, I'll, I'm gonna limit my comments to this tonight. But what what I think here is, I do believe that that the grants and the enterprise funds and 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 those types of things should not be included. I I am, would be in support of changing our charter to state such a thing. Because because I have been on the Board of Aldermen when we have received income from, you know, a windfall or from something else. And we have had uh, Aldermen who who couldn't see the forest for the trees and and realize that, you know, yes, you're overriding the spending cap. However, you're not affecting the taxes. This is money that, you know, in in some cases, it was money that the city didn't even foresee coming, came into the coffers and we couldn't, and when I say appropriate it, we couldn't put it to anything. It just went and it sat in an account, period, end of story. And you may think that that's okay. And and maybe in some cases it is. But when there are needs in this city and we have multitudes of needs, that's a problem. And where I really see this being a problem, and when I look at that difference on this sheet between ninety five million, almost ninety six million dollars and sixty million dollars in one year, if that goes the other way, we can't do anything about that. And we're going to have to turn down grants. Because grants are meant to be appropriated. When we accept a grant, it doesn't come in to just sit into an account, it comes in to be spent. And so if we have a year that's like that under this charter, that's going to be a problem, a major problem. And we're going to have to turn around and tell the taxpayers of this city, sorry, we couldn't accept the twenty five million dollars that came from the federal government or the ten million dollars that came from the federal government that would have helped supplement some of the uh things that you wanted to see happen here in this city. We couldn't do that because we have a spending cap that's so foolishly written that it doesn't allow for that exception. So I will be looking into putting before the voters something to change this and to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, just a couple of things, um, maybe for clarification. I've spent a lot of time working on the bonding in the city. And it's true. The bonds are passed in this chamber by ten votes. It immediately becomes an obligation. City treasurer could go out the next day and sell the bonds if he wanted to. Doesn't make sense, but he could. And we typically have, there's a lot of process in the bonding. The only thing to be concerned about is the debt service on the bond, which is far, far, including the the bonded debt, is far, far it's allowed by the state or even local ordinance, not even close. But we do the bonding to keep the city where it should be relative to infrastructure and other things, whether it's paving, a new fire station, a new DPW building, whatever it is, it's justified and it's passed by this board. The the other thing is, um, we we heard about, you know, if we get a million dollar or a five million dollar grant from the federal government that we might not be able to spend it. If we get a five million dollar grant from the EPA to do something at the wastewater treatment plant, we don't have a choice. We have to do it. And I don't know how that factors into a spending cap, but your hands are tied because it's a government mandate. Having said that, the other thing is that it is, I was trying to point out, but probably not too well since some people are interpreting it the wrong way. This spending cap calculation and the spending cap itself has nothing to do with our budget. Other than, you know, we could not have a budget that spent more than. Other than, you know, we could not have a budget that spent more than 113 million where it is today. Trust me, no one's gonna, you know, even try to do that. The budget that we're trying to pass is, is based on what our divisions need to provide the services in a, in a fundamental way for next year. And they are not a lot of significant increases. So we're going through the budget, we're listening to the division directors, we're seeing where things make sense. And there may be some things missing, but I don't see it changing significantly. In which case, it has nothing to do with the spending cap because we're not even close. We're not even gonna come within maybe $113 million of the spending cap. And, um, you know, I, I think we're in a position now where we have our trust in, in our financial experts, our legal experts and the mayor on, on how the city charter reads and how the court cases went and how the state ruled. And, and to me, that's a solid argument for the way we've calculated the spending cap. But it shouldn't be as big a concern because no matter how you figure it, we're not gonna be close to it with our budget this year, not within $100 million. $113 million. So it's not something we have to solve today or worry about today. Um, if people want to try and change the charter, that's a huge, huge undertaking. But, you know, that's not gonna happen in the next few days. The one thing it takes is an election.
Alderman Jody.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I have several questions. First question to CFO Griffin. If I understand you correctly, the, the number on your calculation, a line item 14, if I'm reading this correctly, 14 total appropriations. That's, um, based upon the charter provision of 56C, which says, uh, total expenditures. Is that correct?
Um, and a President John Griffin CFO, Treasury Task Collector, that's correct.
Okay, and can I continue?
Yes.
And the, uh, the number on, uh, number, line item 25, total proposed appropriations for fiscal year 2023, does not include any, uh, there, there have been no exceptions. 56D, charter provision 56D allows for exceptions. Um, as Attorney Bolton pointed out, the principal and interest on municipal bonds and capital expenditures, that you haven't deducted anything from that number uh, by using that, those exceptions. Is that also correct?
That's correct. The first line item, actually line item number two, general fund, that includes all the debt service, the general fund. Line three, enterprise funds, that's included of all, of all the debt service. So it's only when you get a tighter differential between the allowable and the proposed, would you ever even consider coming in with, you don't need it. You don't need to have the Board of Aldermen exclude that debt. Now, I think if I may, just a little bit of history, because I asked this question of Deputy Corporation Counsel Dory Clark. I asked, did we ever come in and ask for an exclusion? And whoever was on the board in like '03, '04, '05, or as you recall, a lot of inflation, the first thing that Administrative Services Director Maureen Lemieux did was ask for the exclusion. So you didn't have to worry about it. And as Alderman Clemmons appropriately said about getting a windfall, there was subject to check. The city received $20 million from what's called a Claremont decision, education. And those members that were staunch, you know, and vote no on every, every exclusion, voted for it because they could see the benefits of putting $20 million in an account or in a fund. So, but you don't, I just wanted to share that because I was waiting to say that. But you only want to exclude if you're close or you think you're close. Because, subject to my understanding, you can only, you can only exclude once. And that's why Director Lemieux, like, took the whole thing. Let's do the debt service, the capital, the bonding, let's throw it all in. There's an exclusion, then you don't have to worry about it.
Alderman Jody.
So when you say you can only exclude it once, once per fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay. And could, could I ask you, do you have any idea, you know, if, if we did exclude, uh, principal and interest for municipal bonds, which also includes school bonds and capital expenditures, do you have any idea how much money that would be?
Um, the bonds on, the debt service on general funds, about 17 million. Debt service on wastewater is about 4 million, subject to check. Solid waste is another 2.3 or 4. Um, the capital's interesting because we usually don't budget for capital. And I was gonna get into that in a minute. Other than the, the $1 million or so dollars that you, you see, usually what we do during the year is we, when we need to, we introduce bonding legislation. So what I'd like to add is, to the extent we need more bonding in fiscal '23, that's gonna add to the supplemental appropriations and will subtract from the 113 million. That's how the math works. So every time there's, henceforth, every time there's a bonding authorization, I'm gonna explain in my fiscal note that you're, or in the, actually, I'm gonna explain it in the count, in the submittal of the, the bonding resolution, how much are under the cap. Because it just, it just keeps subtracting from the cap amount, the difference between the available cap and what we have.
Okay, thanks. So if I could?
Yes.
So it, it sounds to me like, you know, I, yeah, given the constraints of our current spending cap, uh, charter provisions, it seems to be, you know, even though we don't have an override provision, there seems to be, you know, quite a bit of room there that, you know, if we voted to exclude the bond, you know, principal and interest on bonds and capital expenditures, it seems to be quite a cushion there to me. And if I could ask another question of Attorney Bolton. The, uh, the, the last paragraph of 56, 56C in the charter says, "This provision shall not prevent the mayor and the Board of Aldermen from appropriately funding any programs or, or accounts mandated to be paid from municipal funds by state and federal law." What, what do you think that, that would include?
Oh, well, there are plenty of things we're required to do mandated. Uh, one that we hear a lot is the payments to the state pension system. That's a payment we're required by state law to make and it's unfunded uh, by the state. Municipalities are, are required to make that payment. There are other things, uh, of similar nature. So we're required to do it. And I think the proponents of these cap limitations would say, well, you pay those first and then you have to make do with what's left. Uh, but other, I, I don't think that creates an exclusion, uh, by itself. So we've never had to, uh, to argue that one way or the other. But it, uh, I think it was put in there, um, so they could say it didn't affect our ability to make mandated payments. So I'm not sure that's going to always be true, but I don't think it's affected it yet.
And, uh, one more, I think this is the last. You know, something that, you know, I, I, you know, somebody may have been you said something about, or I guess you didn't disagree with, you know, somebody's statement that this is not the best written. Um, these charter provisions are not the best written, uh, legislation you've ever seen. But I, I'm intrigued by the word "consider." Um, in establishing continued annual municipal budget for the next fiscal year, "The mayor and the Board of Aldermen shall consider total expenditures not to exceed an amount equal to the combined annual budget of the current fiscal year increased by the," and it goes on. And so that word "consider" is an, an interesting choice. Um, I looked up that word in the dictionary and it says, "Think carefully about something before making a decision." You know, it, it doesn't really say you can't spend this money. It just says you have to think about it before you do. Um, so I, I don't think what's, that's ever been considered by a court, um, or ever been ruled by a court, but I, I think it's an interesting, uh, question.
Yeah, I think, well, there are a couple of arguments the other way. Um, again, I think it could have been better worded, but I think the, the intention of the author or authors was to require that that provide a limitation. Um, the sentence, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, "The Board of Aldermen shall act upon budget proposals in accordance with this paragraph." Well, the requirements are in the next paragraph, but anyway. So to say what shall be considered might be interpreted to exclude the ability to consider anything else. So I think that's, that's one argument that says when they say "consider", they mean that's the only thing that will be considered. Um, and then later on, they go and say you can, you can go below this, but you can't go above it. Um, the other thing someone might say is, look, this was, the clear intent was to place a limit on expenditures. Um, they didn't go through all of this to come out with something that was meaningless. And if you just say "consider," then you may decide not to do it. Um, essentially renders everything meaningless. But anyway, I've never, I've never advised anyone to, uh, rely on the word "consider" as giving them a choice to accept or reject. But that's just my opinion. So if you want to say that you can consider other things, uh, that's up to you.
No, I'm just raising the possibility that we can consider the, the very things that are listed here. But after having considered them, we can, we, you know, someone could say that we could go ahead and do something differently after having considered them.
If you want to do that, that, that's, that's up to you. I think, uh, I think we, we might end up talking to people in black robes about it eventually.
I, I, I think there are plenty of, uh, there's plenty of room in the, in the legislation. I don't think it's as, as dire as, um, as we, you know, I must, you know, I, I among others, you know, initially thought, because there are, you know, there are the exceptions in 56D. And, um, and then there's that final paragraph of 56C that, that, you know, says that, you know, you have to, um, you have to do what the state and the federal government mandates. But thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I agree with Alderman Clemmons that grants should not be included. I just, it does not make sense to me that we would add them in as an expenditure. Um, and much to other Aldermen's points about grants having to be used. I know there's a lot of restrictions on a lot of grants. Some of them are time-based, so we might lose it after that year and, um, never get it back. And so to me, it just doesn't make any sense. It's like, if I have a house budget and then I'm walking down the street and $500 bill, I could go home and add it to my budget if I want to and then spend it and call it expenditure. Or I could just take my wife out to dinner and my budget isn't affected one bit at all. It doesn't make any, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I would, I would be in favor of, of at least taking care of the grant issue because it, it just, it makes no sense to me. Um, in considering tonight's meeting, I'm not really worried about solving the budget cap or worrying about the, the cap, the spending cap. Um, my main goal was to understand the cap because as an Alderman and a man who likes to do things correctly, I don't want to pass any budget without understanding everything I can about the fiscal responsibilities of the city and, and what things our budget is subject to and what things our budget is not subject to. Even if we're 1,000% under the cap, I don't care. I want to know what the cap is, how it applies, how it does not apply, because there's lots of information flying around. And so if I call myself an Alderman who cares about the, the voters of this city, then I'm gonna find out everything I can about anything that has to do with the budget, whether that's spending cap, whether that's accounting procedures, doesn't matter. So I can make the best decision, um, come budget time. And yeah, that might not affect, it might not have anything to do with the cap. That's fine. I still want to know what the cap is. I still want to know how it applies, still helpful. Um, and so I think this meeting is super beneficial, at least to me. And it was only beneficial to me. Sorry you're all here, an hour and a half. I appreciate it. Uh, the last comment I'll make, or I have, I have a question. Have we ever been over the cap in a significant way? Not, grants notwithstanding, just in our regular budgetary proceedings? Have we ever, when the, when we had the cap back in the day? Is anyone familiar with like, we ever came to an issue where we're like way over the cap and we had to like cut jobs or cut funding to some city thing? Or we, have we always been pretty under the cap considerations?
There have been years in the early 2000s when the provisions to exclude, uh, principal and interest on bonded debts and/or, uh, capital expenditures, those exclusions were applied in some years. Once those exclusions were applied, the, the level of, of, of expenditures permitted is obviously higher. We've always been under that raised ceiling.
So we've never really had a significant issue with the cap where we had to really rein in our spending, as it were?
Well, in order to get to that level that was under the cap, some higher choices occasionally had to be made. Uh, some employees went without an annual increase in compensation. Uh, some desired expenditures were delayed. Um, we got in trouble one year with the federal government over the number of English as second language teachers was inadequate. Um, so there were, there were struggles to meet those levels at times. But no, we were never over the resulting limitation after exclusions were applied.
Thank you.
All set, Alderman Cathy?
I'm all set, thank you.
And next I have Alderman Sullivan.
Oh, yes, I did have a question. Thank you, Madam President.
You bet.
What would prevent us from just passing something in the charter that would say that the general fund could not be over a certain amount? And then just leave it to one line item and just be done with it?
Well, you can't pass amendments to the charter. That has to be done by a hyper-.
It was a hypothetical question, just to try to make it easy. Because we've been dancing around this a lot about what to exclude, what not to exclude.
Well, then I don't understand your question. What would prevent you is you don't have the authority to do it.
What I'm saying is, if you had the general fund, what, to make it simple, you would just say- you would just say, "The general fund cannot exceed that 2.8% number year over year." And that's it, and just be done with it. And that would be your spending cap.
But that has to be done by a change to the charter.
I understand that. I was asking, what, what would be the downside of doing that? My hypothetical question.
I guess you could get into an argument about what should be included in the general fund or not. So you might have to think about what kind of definition you apply to that. But if you wish to propose that as a charter amendment, I, I, I don't see much of an impediment to that.
I don't. Just a question.
All set, Alderman Sullivan? Alderman Clemons?
Thank you, Madam President. The, in 56C, that last paragraph that kind of bounced around, that said that this provision shall not prevent the mayor and the board of aldermen from appropriately funding any programs or accounts mandated to be paid from municipal funds by state and federal law. Perhaps it's just my interpretation, but I feel that this was put in so that the city can't say, "Well, we spent all our money and now we can't afford to do this, otherwise it's going to put us under, over the spending cap." Therefore, this was put in there that says, "You basically will pay those bills first and the rest of your bills last." And my, is, is that the correct interpretation, Attorney Bolton?
That is certainly one possible interpretation.
I, I, I feel that I, I take it that way. It's kind of like we can't go bankrupt on any kind of a, personally, we can't go bankrupt on a, a federal obligation. So I, I take it in, in that respect, that you pay your federal and state bills first. The, the other comment that I, I kind of wanted to make, let's see if I can understand what I wrote here. The, well, two, two comments. One is, when this was written, I, I understand that there was some sitting alderman that, that wrote it, but was it a citizens group that created this that went through the secretary of state? Or did it actually come from the board of aldermen?
It was a citizens initiative that put this on the ballot, yes.
So the, the wording of it is how the citizens put it there, not how it was necessarily worked appropriately and so on. I just wanted to kind of get that out. I thought that was the case, but I didn't want to make that statement without.
One of our frequent commentators claims to have been the sole author. I have heard other people say that they contributed to the drafting of it. Frankly, if I were in the room when it was drafted, I would not be taking credit at all.
I, I, I completely understand that. And, and then to the comment about, we, we've never really gone over the spending cap. Would it be fair to say we don't go over the spending cap? Because when we, we do our budgeting, we, we're keeping that in mind. In other words, we didn't take care of necessarily the streets of the paving and so on. That was something that happened after this kind of got lifted, because we knew it didn't fall within the spending cap. So to say that we did not hit the spending cap is probably kind of an unfair. We went forward with knowing the spending cap was there. Would, would you feel comfortable saying that? Mr. Griffin?
Yes, Madam President, members of the committee. Having presided kind of when the recession or the second great recession was midway, 2011, '12, '13, inflation was very low, cost of living wasn't as high. But clearly, the first thing I'd do for the mayor is calculate the spending cap, because I knew what the numbers were. And I kept track of it, so I could definitely provide how tight the submittals were. Like, I think one was under 1,000 one year. So if you start with the spending cap, you reduce spending to get there. Tax cap, on the other hand, you know what your revenue is to be able to spend, so. Spending cap's a little bit problematic and decide, as Attorney Bolton says, deciding what's in and out of the general fund is going to be a challenge. But that's okay. But you start with that. So when I first came here, I advised the mayor, "This is the total amount." And we had to work with the police department, fire department, Department of Public Works. And there really wasn't a lot of money available to do anything material. As you've heard, we had, used to have a $2 million capital improvement budget, where 1 million was given to pave roads, just not effective. The other million were what you see now. We don't have a robust capital improvement program. That's why you're getting a lot of bonding authorizations. But it was tight. It was tight. It was, we were fiscally constrained because as you know, the, the CPIU at the time, then it was changed to the SNL IPD, it, it really kind of choked the ability to add to the budget.
So just for clarification, basically, we backed into the budget. Said, "This is all that we can spend," not necessarily, "This is all that we have," without going up on taxes, "but this is all we can spend based on these constraints." Is that correct?
There was a significant limitation on the ability to spend on things that were needed.
Again, that is what makes things different between, I'm sorry, Madam President, the difference between a tax cap versus a spending cap. They are not the same thing. A tax cap, we could stay within a tax cap if we had increased revenue. And that would not affect the people. A spending cap actually can affect how we can do our job to keep our infrastructure straight. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a, it's a, both are challenging, tax caps. There's not, several individuals would love to come in and add revenue streams and then you find out it really, caution more to get the revenue and what it's intended. But, but they're both very challenging. Having, like I said, resided in two and a half in Massachusetts, it's, it's challenging. But I do have that information and I, I see some folks that wouldn't mind sharing it, because it's, it's literally lifting the information off all of these budgets on a spreadsheet that you can see. It's very challenging to do supplemental appropriations when you don't have any room left under the cap. And my tenure here, the cap was looked at, the, the exclusions were looked at more as an override. So there was kind of a, a challenge to not want to override or not want to exclude. So that's what, that's what I lived with from like '13 to '17. And then the spending cap was deemed unenforceable by the courts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
President, Attorney Bolton. Earlier we were talking about, has the city ever actually exceeded the spending cap? And it was sort of described that previously there were ordinances put in place to kind of dodge the spending cap by redefining what is under it. But I also believe, I understand that we can't do that now. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay, so can't take the shortcuts the previous boards took and we probably shouldn't have in the first place. But then my second question was, I think to Attorney Bolton, but maybe to CFO Griffin. We were talking about overrides with regards to infrastructure or maybe exclusions with regards to infrastructure improvements. So if we build a fire station, then we could potentially get 10 votes and, and do that. But what about personnel expenses? Would those be considered part of the budget that can't be removed from the spending cap? So would we be able to afford to staff those firefighters?
That might be a problem. Now, right now, you know, we're, we're 113 million away from hitting the, the cap. So right now, you might be able to squeeze it in. But we may not always be in the same fiscal circumstance. So yeah, personnel expenses are not capital. They're, they're ordinary expenditures and there's no exclusion for that.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Alderman Dow?
Just a couple of things. I think every city in New Hampshire, their charters are different. They're not all identical, correct?
That's correct.
And Manchester, this is the first year in a number of years where they haven't overridden whatever cap they have. So their cap's not working too well either. Having been around for a while, I can tell you that the road structure in Nashua went, let me use a different term, went downstream severely. And that's why we have spent, I think it's $75 million to bring the roads back up to speed. And we have sort of promised that we would allocate enough money after this bond is done to stay ahead of the roads. Because, because of the cap, we weren't able to do the road paving that we were supposed to do. Other infrastructure failed. When we replaced Nashua High with the current Nashua High South, I can tell you from personal observation, that building was in terrible, terrible shape. The only thing that we were able to survive for the new building was one wall and the stairwells. And we don't need to go into a lot of detail. But the other thing that occurred was SERF. You know, they had developed this SERF program because our vehicle replacement under former mayors, because of the spending cap, went to hell in a handbasket. And even the SERF isn't up to where it should be, as we've explained several times. So the cap has, has not been a friend to anyone. And, you know, it's, it's, it boils down to, "Pay me now or pay me a lot more later." When we built the two high schools, we built them the last. If you go into high schools now, they look brand new. And they're functioning perfectly well, but they're 20 years old. The high school before that didn't even last 15. So you have to spend your money wisely. And having that constraint on it that was imposed, didn't do the city any favors. And it didn't do any taxpayers any favors either.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry. I just noticed that there was no public comment on tonight. Can we, can I motion for public comment before we adjourn?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to add public comment.
Motion is to add public comment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Any further questions, clarifications, anything? Okay. I will open up the floor for public comment. Three minutes. Name and address for the record. Anyone that wishes to give public comment regarding the spending cap issue?
Mike Ordolano, 41, excuse me, 41 Berkeley Street. Yeah, the, the, this whole issue has been really interesting and kind of enlightening to listen to what's going on with this spending cap versus tax cap. You know, sometimes it's, it's, it's best to simplify as, as much as possible upfront. I mean, it was kind of hard to determine that in fact, you know, we're not really, this is an issue that doesn't appear to be affecting the budget this year, right? The spending cap, as I understand it, there's such a large gap between what, you know, what would be possible and where you hit a limitation that it, you know, if I understand it right, the interpretation of the board, or at least Attorney Bolton and the CFO is that, "Hey, we got no problems." So, you know, if that's, if that's the case, that's kind of nice because it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that grant money, which, you know, if you get, if you get $50,000 grant and then you're supposed to spend the $50,000, but, you know, you're allowed to go like 3% above the $50,000, you know, or you're permitted to. It's just kind of the math of it, doesn't make a, a ton of sense to me. So, you know, the other thing that I, I, I see is, you know, sometimes there are alternative interpretations. And, and one of the nice things about public comment and, and being able to bring other people in is, is you can get these alternative interpretations put on the table so that everybody can kind of see where the differences are. You know, a lot of times it ends up the same place, but it makes you feel like the, the process is a lot more transparent when, you know, it's other than, you know, it's my way or the highway sort of dialogue. So, I mean, my, my understanding would be, and I'd like confirmation, I'd like confirmation that I, I have it right, is that it, this is kind of an irrelevant issue to this specific budget cycle. And, and if it isn't, then it would be nice to see the alternative interpretations so that at least the board is acting on, you know, is acting with full knowledge if there are different ways to look at this thing and, and, and maybe the board would consider alternatives. So I'll cut, I'll go 30 seconds short.
Thank you.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I want to thank the board for holding this meeting. It was very informative. Interesting to hear the perspective and I appreciate the questions everyone brought to the table. I, I would have liked to have heard some of the people who had worked on the spending cap speak and have an opportunity to have a little bit of time to present their positions because I think interpretation is always, you know, a little complicated and it's not a black and white issue. And I hate to see things come down to arguments that are, you know, "We're going to go to court on it, we're going to sue on it, we're going to force it into that." That, "We're going to force it through that hole." I, I'd like to see more consensus building done, so that's not the case. It's not often productive. And these are complex issues. I tend to agree that I do not think the grant money belongs in the calculation. I think grants are different. They really are different. You know, there's the money you're appropriating for departments to run and operate. And then grants come in and it's not money that you are necessarily in need of appropriating. And when I looked up expenditure, the term, you know, total expenditure, municipal expenditure, and, you know, GAO or any type of organization, accounting organization, it really talks about the monies required by schools, police, fire, all your departments. No language that I interviewed, reviewed it for definitions on my phone came up with grant money included. So I do think that's separate and I think that's a legitimate point. I'm not certain we're at that 113 million under the cap. I think there's some skew there that I don't fully understand. And, and I'd like to understand that a little bit more. And I, you know, I, yeah, I want us to, you know, I'd like to see us work together more with the public and gather the views of those that have been around longer and value the input that they have because there is perspective there. And for whatever reason, in '17, '18, '19, we went along with this calculation done this way. And then, and we had virtually the same management leadership team here that applied it that way. And then it changed in 2023. And, you know, for somebody looking in from the outside, it's a red flag. It's just, it's a little bit of a, "Hey, what's going on here? Why the need for the switch?"
30 seconds.
So again, thank you very much for holding this. I think it was informative for everyone. Appreciate the time you all gave this. Thank you.
Next we have Scott McCullough.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Scott McCullough, 49 Congress Street, Apartment 6. I'd like to say thank you to the board of aldermen who showed up, Lopez and Kelly, I think it was. Thank you very much. My goal is, if you guys can help, if Lopez can help, I would need to raise, I'd like to raise 1,500, or it's 1,500 to get these awesome Best Buddies shoes. Earpieces, yeah, probably not this time, because that's like $2,500 that I have to raise. I think, I think, I think he could help me. I greatly appreciate it. And I'd like to come to the chambers maybe sometime in September. Ms. Co-Chair, Ms. Co-Chair, if that's all right with you. Lori, I called you, left you a message if you, if you can check your schedule and let me know what's the best time to come into the chambers and present an award. I'd like to present an award and do a thing on the big screen and show you what Best Buddies is all about, when it, when it is a good time. And maybe sometime in September. If you can let, let me know, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guthro?
Yes, Matthew Guthro, 104 Fawn Lane in Nashua. I really wanted to thank-
I really wanted to thank you guys for hosting this opportunity to, to listen to how the spending cap is being put together. I agree with many of the aldermen who spoke up concerning grant funding. I think anytime that we can offset the taxpayer dollars with grant funds, I think is an optimal solution that we should all be in favor of. And I think that this is really a great opportunity for us to look at doing stuff like that. I came from a city four years ago in Florida, it's about the same size of, as Nashua, and we had a full-time staffer that was looking for these grant fund opportunities. And so I think if we can find opportunities to offset taxpayer dollars with grant funds, I think it would be beneficial for us and for our budget, especially if we're looking at, you know, the cost of living increases and everything that we're seeing right now in today's economy. I think we should definitely dig deeper into, into grant funding for these expenditures. Thank you.
Fred T. Bone?
Yes, Madam. I did not appear in the chamber because I did not know that you allowed comment. I asked to attend this meeting and present the spending cap as has always been intended. That is a control on taxes and fees. Grants have nothing to do with taxes and fees. This thing about gross budgeting by CFO Griffin is a farce. It's false. It's misleading. It's untrue. I presented to this board in writing, the spending cap calculation as it should be, you're about $5.7 million over the cap. As far as putting in projects, they haven't even been bonded yet, makes that part of the spending calculation, is absolutely insane. It's ridiculous. What you're doing is a gross injustice for what has been a cap for many, many years. I resent it. I resent what you're doing, and I think we're going to be heading straight to court. And this time, if we do go to court, I'm going to ask for a fine on every alderman that participates in this discussion and adheres to this farce presented by CFO Griffin. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I have Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the June 13, 2022, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 8:54 PM. Thank you, everyone.